Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg's meeting for August 5th, 2024. Before we begin, we kindly ask that you take a moment to silence your cell phones. This includes turning off notifications, phone calls, and any media or gaming sounds. Your cooperation helps us to ensure a smooth and respectful meeting, and thank you for your understanding. At this time, we invite you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we begin, I just wanted to make a note and an announcement that Commissioner O'Donnell will be coming a few minutes late, but he will be attending shortly, we hope. Okay, starting off, an announcement. The Board of Commissioners will be holding a closed executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel that affects one or more specific individuals. The authority for this meeting in closed session, the authority for meeting in closed session for this purpose is permitted by the General Provisions Article Section 3-305B1, Annotated Code of Maryland, which authorizes us to meet in closed session to discuss employment. So we will be ending our open meeting and then moving into a closed session. Okay, future meetings. We have our Planning Commission meeting coming up on August 26th at 7:00 PM in the Town Office and on Zoom. Board of Commissioners meeting September 9th, 7:00 PM, Town Office and on Zoom. Also, the write-in election deadline is Tuesday, September 24th by noon, which brings me to another announcement that Friday, August 30th, at 4:30 is the deadline to file as an election candidate if you're interested in running for Commissioner. So again, that's Friday, August 30th at 4:30. Plan accordingly. It does require documents to be notarized. Okay, moving on, we're going to look at the proving, let me try that again in English, approval of the meeting minutes for July 15th, 2024. Commissioners, I know you have this in your packet ahead of time. We do have one quick modification that will be added. So if you could please turn your attention to Ms. Willet, she will direct you where that addition will be added.
Okay, so it's on page seven, Agenda Item Number Four. The vote count got left off, so it will read motion by Commissioner Hoover, second by Commissioner O'Donnell, three yays, zero nays, and two absent.
Thank you. Okay, with that addition, are there, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes with the addition with the vote count for Agenda Item Number Four?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, any further discussion or questions? Okay, are there none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. She carries four in favor and one absent. Okay. Moving on to the Police Report.
Good evening. It's still myself. Deputy Bartholomew is out still on FMLA. Deputy Testament and Corporal Bird are filling in for him while he is out. I used two holiday leave days and one sick day. I did my routine Police One training online. We have no fleet issues, no trouble there. We handled 164 calls for service, six arrests, and 19 traffic stops. One call that was worth highlighting was a trespassing at Rutter's, which led to to arrest for possession of heroin, and they also had two open warrants. And then you'll see that we added a second stat sheet that goes more in depth for you guys. For the month of July, for traffic, we had 34 warnings, 154 for the year. Citations were nine, 32 for the year. Repair orders, we had zero. Crashes, we've handled six in the past month and 38 this year. Selectives, that's just a time where we spend like 30 minutes in one location doing traffic stops. We've done 22 of those for the year, zero last month. Arrest stats were two criminal for the month, four for the year so far. Three traffic arrests, 10 for the year. Warrants, one, five for the year. Juvenile, zero arrests there. And the total arrests were six for the month and 25 for the year as far as traffic is. Walking patrols. I don't believe that's accurate, but we did two this month. And 34 for the year. A lot of those get mixed up with the tox cards. I think the dispatcher thinks we're saying walks instead of talks. I don't know why. But it's basically the same thing. If I'm talking to somebody, I'm out of my car, walking around. We've done 20 of the tox cards and 113 for the year. Bike patrols, zero. We don't ride bikes. School safety checks, we've done zero this month because it's summer. 108 for the year. Zero burglaries this month, two for the year. Thefts, three this month, 13 for the year. MDoP, that means malicious destruction of property. We've had one this month and five for the year. Disturbances, six for this month and 21 for the year. Suspicious activity, three this last month and 40 for the year. Noise complaints, five for the month, 25 for the year. Domestics, zero this month, which is good, eight for the whole year. Juvenile complaints, zero. And five for the whole year. Robberies, zero all year. Assaults, three and eight for the year, and overdoses, zero this month, but two for the year.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. That was a lot.
That was a lot.
Any questions for me?
Questions?
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, thank you very much. It was very helpful. Okay. Okay, from there, we are moving on to the Town Manager's Report, turning it over to Ms. Willet.
Good evening. This is the Town Manager's Report for June of 2024. I'll highlight some of the key areas related to streets. Staff put the small US flags and the flower beds around the square for Flag Day and Fourth of July. They continue to work with the contractor on the parking meter project, not the parking lot project. They put farmers' market signs around town. They mowed some curbs in the developments, and then weed ate and killed some streets and alleys around town. Related to parks outside of the normal daily park checks and mowing and trimming, they put up the Emmitsburg banners in the parks. They have been routinely at the pool, working on bathrooms, and then staff worked at the community park stockpile to clean it up, to maintain its compliance with the county. For wastewater, we treated an average of 487,803 gallons per day and consumed 279,023 gallons, which meant 6.9% of the wastewater treated in the month of June was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage, and we only exceeded the design capacity one day in the month of June. In June, we received 2.1 inches of precipitation. It rained only four days in the month of June. We have, currently have, as of this report, we have a surplus of 5.2 inches of precipitation. Rainbow Lake is currently at the spillway level. On page 11, you'll see the average well depths, as well as the well depths for the month of June. On page 12 is the monthly average well depth so far. Water production and consumption, we produced an average of 278,226 gallons and consumed an average of 279,023, which meant the amount of backwash water in the month of June is, was roughly 6.9%. Trash pickup will remain Mondays during the month of August. I listed out some of the meetings I attended in June. I did attend the MML Summer Conference at the end of the month as well. Just some highlighted areas. Staff is meeting, has continued to meet with engineers at the Rainbow Lake Dam to address MBE's requirements. Staff attended a meeting with the engineers for the Water Clarifier project. The flows of well number one and number two were turned up in June, and that's mostly because in the summer, the lake water, the quality deteriorates, so the amount of well water has to be turned up. We've met several times with MBE regarding our permit renewal as they have changed standards and procedures. We sent out several letters to homeowners on damaged or missing sewer caps as the goal is to continue to reduce the amount of INI in the sewer system. Staff worked with the contractor repairing water leaks on Waynesboro Pike and a fire hydrant on Creamery Way. And that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, moving on. Thank you. We're looking now to turn to the Grants, or no, I'm sorry, the Town Planner's Report.
I can do the Grant Administrator's Report if you would like. That worked. I got some hot, just some highlights that I wanted to go over. Oh, that should have, yeah, those two should be under the Town Manager's Report. Somehow they got moved, so they're all under me. Okay. Michelle wanted me just to note, we have issued five notice to, notice to proceeds on projects in the last couple of weeks. The Water Clarifier project notice to proceed was issued on July 22nd. Substantial completion date is October 15th, 2025. The DePaul Street Waterline Project will be starting this week, and it's expected to be completed by April 18th of '25. As soon as we get a schedule, we will get notice out to the residents on DePaul Street. The Rainbow Lake Parking Lot Project Notice to Proceed was issued on July 29th, and it's expected to be completed by November 26th of this year. The Notice to Proceed for the new restroom concession stand building will be issued this month on August 12th, and it's expected to be completed by December 12th. And the multi-user trail improvements, the Red Trail Notice to Proceed was issued on August 1st, and it's expected to be completed by April 1st of 2025. She also wanted to add, we are putting out to bid this month the design fabrication installation of the new welcome signs, and the board should have that on their agenda for September.
Okay. Great, thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments regarding the Grant Administrative Report? So, right? From there, do we want to go to the Town Planner's Report?
Okay, I have just a few things that she highlighted. She wanted to mention the Penny Mark. The grand opening was July 17th on East Main Street. The Emmitsburg Distillery and Fertile Stone are coordinating to revise the Creamery Court Improvement Plan. The, a survey for the McNair Property Annexation has been completed by the potential applicant. The deed of easement for daughters of charity property for the MS4 tree plantings has been finalized, and it'll be on the agenda for September. Christ Community Church's Improvement Plan was tabled by the Planning Commission. I believe they're going to hear it again at the end of August. And then the Comprehensive Plan Municipal Growth and other sections are in progress.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments regarding the Town Planner's Report? Nope. Okay. Hearing none, we will move on. The Parking Enforcement Report is in your Agenda Packet for you to reference. We don't typically go over that unless you have specific questions.
Yeah, I had a question about that in terms of the credit card payments that are now being made through the meters. Will we, do we want to add that to the report, the profit from the?
It's actually in there. That's included in your meter revenue.
And the meter money collected. Okay, so that's included.
Okay. The only question I had, I knew at the last meeting, there was ever, we were talking about, there was a request for how to use our parking meters for our senior population, maybe with some large print, I didn't know.
Yeah, what we're going to do, some of the businesses, we've already distributed the how-to use thing. I think Sheila has one at the beauty shop. You didn't, you didn't get one for your window? There's nothing in your window? That's where I saw one near your window. Okay, well, Wednesday, we're going to every business on Main Street. We're going to instruct the business owners on how they work and then give them a, basically a cheat sheet so they can help their customers with any questions. And right now, we're just giving out warnings instead of tickets until people get used to it. So they, till they figure out they don't put their coins in the credit card slot. So, but it's, it's a new experience, and we're going to work with the community real hard. And we're going to be out Wednesday and Thursday, meeting with everyone.
Sounds good. Thank you for the update. All right, that was the Parking Enforcement Commissioner Turquest. Any additional questions on, on that report? Okay, all right, so we are moving on to Commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner Turquest.
I will pass.
Okay, moving on, Commissioner Sweeney.
I don't have any comments.
Okay, and I'll go on to Commissioner Hoover, any?
So last month, we had a Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. There was three members there, so I don't know if it's really a form or not, but anyway, we did talk and have discussions. The two biggest things came up really was the farmers' market, the clarity. So the, it was part of my attention about the hours of operation. So maybe, of course, maybe look. So the sign analyst on around 15 tells us 3:00 to 6:30 PM. The sign out here, the hard sign is 2:00 to 8:00 PM, and the new banner is 3:00 to 7:00, which I think is what we actually do. So just probably for next year, but trying.
We were looking at changing them, but I think staff's going to ask to make a presentation at the next meeting and look at rebranding and revitalizing, and so we didn't put any money into changing the signs.
Okay.
But yes, you're correct, they are wrong.
And this late in the year, I wouldn't suggest we do it that way, because also, one of the things that's talked about was because of, like you just said, the rebranding and redevelop the recreation, whatever you want to call it, possibly even consider a different day. We'll see if that'll help. And the other thing, it's come up a time or two before, and here in the meetings, making from the same committee, questions about a light, a street light, not a traffic light, a 140 and the east entrance to Rutter's. So there's none, so the east end, so the fourth in the entrance exit on the east end, there's no light, it's just a dark kind of entrance there. That probably would have been covered in the comp plan, or not the comp plan, in the design if they was going to put one. But I don't think it's going to be a state highway mandate because most of the intersections along 140 are not lit. But, but because there's a business there, I don't know, that may be something, if we can't correct it this time, then maybe at least for future, if we have a business or something. But, but it's a little dark there, but like I said, it does seem to be the standard along 140, and then I have a white light there. But if we can look into it in the future, whatever, or even cover this one possibly, that's what came up. I think we covered most everything from the meeting.
Okay.
That's it. What we're hoping to happen is when the parking ride goes in there, that it's going to be, they're going to put some, some lighting in there for that. And that was due like two years ago, so the light will probably come on tonight.
Do more closer to like 15 years ago.
Yeah, so. But your state government at work.
So that was their response, though, from what I recall is that they did say, yeah.
Yeah, that would, like I said, that would not, the state, I mean, the state would have looked into plan then as well. The county would have did the plan, so nobody mandated the light there. But it'd be hard to go back to Rutter's now, so we want a light there.
Right.
I'd say it could be done, but if, but if the parking ride lot's going to go there, it will certainly light up that area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Quick comments, same thing I said before, deadline to submit your application to run for Commissioners, August 30th at 4:30. And we do have the Thurmont and Emmitsburg Community Show coming up at Catoctin High School, September 8th, I mean, 6th through the 8th. So it looks like another wonderful lineup of community activities, and please check it out. With that, I turn it over to Mayor Comments for Mayor Davis.
Okay, I got a couple, so I'll try to go quick. As you heard from the Town Manager's Report, there's a ton of projects going on, so staff is going to be really, really busy. But, you know, please try to, to watch and see what's going on in town with some of these projects. The water line replacements and the Water Clarifier has been on the books for a long, long time, so it's finally coming to reality. Annandale Road County Highway is working on that. It's going to be closed for about three weeks, but it should take care of the flooding, probably not in time for the weekend, but it's going to take care of the flooding in the, in the future. So that's, that's a good thing. College students are going to be returning. I know everybody's excited about that. I am. We have the freshman afternoon in the park on August 17th, where they bring all the freshman college students into the park. Businesses are asked to set up in the park and try to, you know, give an orientation to what's, what's happening around town, what's here for the, for the college freshmen. And they, they get to use the pool and the basketball courts, and they have a little meal, and it's kind of a neat little thing. And they, they've gotten, they've gotten a good response out of that from the past class. This is be, probably be what, the third year, I believe, Kathy? Yeah, okay. And also, I am setting up a meet and greet with the students that live in Emmitsburg. As you know, we were probably getting close to maybe 100 students that, that live here in town. So in the past, we've had some issues, but, so I'm going to try to cut that off at the very beginning. So I'm going to have a meet and greet in the park with some hot dogs and things like that, and let them tell me what they expect from the town, and then in turn, I will tell them what we expect from them as being citizens. And hopefully, we'll get off to a good start and have a good working relationship. But guess a thing to remember, probably the easiest way, remember when you were 18. I'll let it that, yeah, I'll let it that, so. The charging stations out back for the electric cars, there's a sign out there that says you can only charge from, you can't charge your cars after 10 o'clock. We're working on an ordinance to get that changed. We work with the county. We're not sure, nobody's sure why that was done, but we're getting more electric cars, and there's, that's the only two charging stations in town. So that's going to be open 24 hours. The sports fee program that we had talked about, trying to help out our, our athletes at the high school. We were reaching out to Thurmont to see if we can do a joint program with them to raise funds to help, help the athletes buy equipment and things like that, since the registration fees for each sport has went kind of crazy. Town crews have already started to prepare for the possibility of heavy rain and flooding this weekend. The sewer plant, we're getting lagoons pumped down, so we're going to do everything possible to, to handle the heavy rain that could be coming this way. And finally, unfortunately, we had a meeting with one of the local trucking firms last week. They, they received a threatening letter in the mail from, we believe it's a citizen here in town that's not happy with them, but we're not going to tolerate threats. I just, I just ask, if you have a problem or an issue with any business in town that you, you call us, let us know what's going on, what we can do to help fix it. This trucking firm, they're willing to do whatever they can do to be welcome here in town, but they also have a business to run, and we don't want to have anyone having threats against their, their equipment or their drivers. So the Sheriff's Department has opened an investigation into that, but, yeah, we want to fix the problems, but this, that's not the way to go about it. So I just ask everyone to, you know, come to us, let us try to deal with the problems and then take care of it in, in a very peaceful way. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Quick question, Mr. Mayor, is the electric car changing of the hours coming up on the agenda sometime soon?
Yeah, we just got the approval probably last Thursday or Friday, so we have to have time to write the ordinance up, and it is an ordinance, so it has to come up.
Right, okay.
September or?
Okay, just checking to see if it was gonna, all right, perfect, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question about the electric power, so I don't know who put this one in. Michelle may be able to look into Allegheny Power and see if they're for fidelity, whatever it is, but for grants, because I knew BGE puts them in for free all over, so a bunch of them, so I don't know.
Yeah, we got these four through a grant.
Yes, I mean, there's a bunch of them. The power company where it's putting them in for free to put multiple ones into places. Maybe, maybe something worth, worth looking into to get more of in the pause.
Okay, thank you. Um, welcome, Commissioner O'Donnell. We're just finishing up Mayor's comments, so if we'd like to backtrack for Commissioner O'Donnell comments, we can squeeze you in.
Good evening, thank you. Pardon my late arrival. It was a work schedule conflict, therefore I have to serve a different master on that one. Thank you. This past weekend, we had the NICA event on the trails. We had 60 young people riding on the trails. Afterwards, oh, in addition to that, the mayor came and visited. Mr. Mayor, thank you for doing that. There was a great deal of support from a few businesses in town, including the new Gettysburg Smoothie Shop that provided a 20% discount, and the Palms had offered a 10% discount to anybody who came to the event, and those were very well received and appreciated. I don't know if anyone got to the Palms, but I do know that some folks got to the Smoothie Shop and gave it a 10 out of 10. In town, I did sort of a very rough economic survey, drove through town, saw 20 bikes on racks on the cars that had attended the event, meaning that we had 20 young people in town plus drivers to get them here. So I, I hope there's a correlation that we can see between events at the trails, bringing people into town and spending money, and then that's very important. The other side of it is, we hope to have more events in the future, and we also look forward to having the parking lot in place hopefully by Thanksgiving. So should we have an event between now and then, which I hope we will, that something's being spoken about in October, that we can look forward to that. Last item, the Senior Olympic Disc Golf Event. The staffer with that organization did share that they do intend to come back in 2025. So that's good news also, and with that, I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments. At this time, we will have a four-minute limit. I see we have two people signed up. Mr. David Ventura, it looks like you are going to speak about the sock, or, oh, there you are, the soccer club. Is this in reference to the shed, which is an Agenda Item? Or because, or would? Oh. Oh, well, let's, let's bring you up. Wait, I'm going to stop you, I'm sorry. Just turn on your microphone and state your name and whether or not you live in Emmitsburg.
I'm David Ventura. I do not live in Emmitsburg. I live in Thurmont, up the road. We, a group of soccer coaches are starting a club in Emmitsburg. I don't know if we were here last, last meeting with Andy and Carlos. Andy's the president, Carlos is the registrar. They live in town, so they're town members. But yeah, I'm here to answer any questions or any information that you guys may, may want or need, and also to find out, you know, what size or location we can place a shed for all the equipment and all the soccer stuff that we're going to need.
Absolutely, and we do have the shed on the agenda, so we can talk about that in more detail. That's not, would you like to come back up at that section as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And then we have Mr. Jack Weller.
Hello, I'm not a resident of the town. All right, I like, in reference to, I like to say about the INI sewer caps, what does the INI stand for that I just heard a few minutes ago?
Inflow and infiltration.
Okay, all right. And the other thing I was going, one of the other things I was going to ask is, what percentage of the water that the town uses is coming from the lake? As, well, I know not now, but because you do your June thing.
If you, if you want to direct questions this way, I'm sorry, we, we go this way to go that way. So I'm sorry, what was the question, what percentage of?
Yeah, because you said you were using the wells more because of the lake quality goes down. I was just wondering, because it used to be that you would say we're getting 33% of the water from the, for the town, from the lake. And now it's, I didn't hear the percentage for this for June.
Oh, understood.
It's right about 30%.
It's still 30, okay, one-third, okay.
It's in your packet. It's for the month of June, it was 65% from the wells and 34%, 35% from the lake in the month of June.
Okay, the other thing is, back in May, I had, I had a, I was getting some tire work done in it, in it, quality tar. Anyways, I went over to the, to the park to wait for them to fix it. And they said they would call me and tell me when it was done. So I was there and I had to go to the bathroom. And this is like 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Well, the bathroom was closed. So I was wondering, and I saw a woman taking her children over there and trying to go in and they couldn't go neither. So I was wondering, how come, are the bathrooms not open during the day?
Are you talking about in the Eugene Myers or in Memorial or?
Where the big, right over here where the disc golf is, and there's that big pavilion that's right near the, the.
I understand they're open for events. And we do have something in place coming up where we're going to have the bathroom doors on automatic locks, so that it doesn't require manpower to come and, and open and close down those every night. And that will also allow us to eliminate the porta potties that we have in the park. So that, well, we know that that's an issue and it's right now looking to be resolved with those automatic locks.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, the next latest thing, if I have time, is about the trails. I went up on the trails recently, I went on the Orange Trail and the Purple One. I haven't been on the other two, but I'm telling you, whoever fixed, whoever done the job up there done a fantastic job of getting the weeds down and everything. And whoever it is, they should be commended, I think. He took the trees off, so. And the last thing is, I got today's free paper and I'm reading Tony Town News and I saw that they were having issues with the Delauder bankruptcy. So I'm just, this is just a comment, I'm just hoping that this doesn't affect Emmitsburg. I mean, not theirs, but you don't have the same kind of problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the compliments on the trails. We do have some excellent volunteers, did you want to?
Sure, just to jump in, part of that effort was funded by the town from the Maintenance and Promotion Fund that we have. So we did hire a contractor to do part of it, but we also have, right here, here's my logbook, we have about 60 hours of volunteer work. So it's a combination of those two things. We, we try to go as light as we can on the landscaper and heavy as we can on the volunteers to stretch our dollars. And it always seems to work, even the landscaper worked hours beyond what he had submitted for his contract. So there is some enthusiasm for it, so that's appreciated. Regarding the pool piece, there was a change in how we operate the bathrooms related to the pool. Or I'll reverse that, the bathroom piece. It had been in the past that the pool staff would open the bathrooms when the pool was open. And that would be the, like the, the bathroom bunker by the tenants' courts. And then at the end of the pool day, they would close that. But we ran into some issues regarding the, the pool contract allowing that. So as a result of that, we see that we do have a porta potty. But as the president said, we're addressing that. We have some, a fixed inbound, which will be a remote control device, which will unlock them and lock them. So that's, I think, the reference to manpower, if I'm right on that. So much to the credit of staff, that's how these things are coming about. So I hope that addresses the bigger picture. And I love that you're out on the trails all the time, kind of jealous.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comments. So now we are moving on to administrative business, which we have none. So then we skip down to consent agenda. We only have one item, which is the proclamation for making August 6, 2024, National Night Out for consideration. So I will read the proclamation. We, I believe we do this every year with National, National Night Out coming up. Proclamation, National Night Out, Tuesday, August 6, 2024, in the Eugene Myers Parks from 6 to 8 p.m. Whereas the National, wait a minute, need reading glasses, gotten to that age. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a national community building campaign on the first Tuesday in August each year entitled National Night Out. And whereas National Night Out has been an annual event in the town of Emmitsburg for the past six years. And whereas the National Night Out event provides an opportunity for neighbors in the town of Emmitsburg to join over 38 million people in over 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of the town of Emmitsburg come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the Board of Commissioners of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6, 2024, National Night Out in Emmitsburg, and do hereby call upon all citizens, neighbors, community agencies, and businesses to join Frederick County Sheriff's Office and the National Association of Town Watch in support of National Night Out in the Eugene Myers Park. All right. So we don't have to vote on that, we do vote on that because it's consent. Okay, so all in favor of the proclamation? I'm sorry, is there a motion to adopt? What am I doing? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say, oh, I'm sorry, further discussion?
No, there's none, because it's consent.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Motion is adopted 5-2-0. Now we are moving on to our treasurer's report, turning it over to Commissioner Turnquist.
This is the cash activity report as of July 24, 2024. Our cash balance on July 1st was $10,140,794. Deposits totaling $449,865. Withdrawals, $1,023,210. With an operating balance forward of $9,567,449. The top 10 checks are there in the center of the page. In terms of the fund breakdown as of July 24th, in the general fund, we had 1.7 million capital projects, $1,021,729. Our water fund, $251,337. ARPA funds, 2.7 million, almost 2.8 million. Our sewer funds, 3.7 million, for a total balance of 9.5 million. And that's it. If you have any questions?
If I can add just one, so you'll see the two top checks for Conawaygo and their Creamery Road Pump Station. After those two payments, we have met our cash requirement as town funds. And now we will start drawing from the USDA loan.
Thank you for that clarification. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on to the Planning Commissioner Report.
So the Planning Commission met on July 29th to discuss Christ Community Church Improvement Plan. And as Ms. Willis said earlier, the, it was tabled so the applicant could address staff and engineering comments. We also discussed extending, discussed the town's existing growth boundary and potentially adding a secondary growth tier referred to as a growth opportunity area or GOA. This GOA would provide an additional one-quarter to one-third mile buffer beyond the current growth boundary. This would allow greater flexibility in the future if we were to annex in any property. And maybe there'd be, so if this is our growth boundary and maybe there's just this little bit outside the growth boundary that we'd want to annex in, having that one-third or one-quarter mile buffer would allow us to potentially go a little bit further than the existing growth boundary. But that's something that will be added to the comprehensive plan and come before the Board of Commissioners at some point and consider. The other thing that we talked about briefly were tap fees for Christ Community Church. And they had sent an email to the Board of Commissioners requesting a reduction in tap fees. So I'm curious if tonight, perhaps we want to give, if the commissioners want to take this as an opportunity to give direction to staff in terms of how to move forward with that request. I'd like to see that go before the town attorney for guidance and advice.
I think what we maybe could do, Commissioner Turnquist, is we could add it to an agenda so that if there is any feedback from our lawyer, we can talk about it at our next meeting. Would that suffice? Yes, oh, okay. Thank you. So when we build our agenda for September, we'll make sure to add that in. I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Sure, two questions on the GOA. Is that something that the state is doing as a new practice or the county, or is that something that we're putting forward?
There are, I believe Frederick County is now using the GOA. Mr. Eric Soder had attended our meeting and proposed the idea. So it's still right now in the development stage.
And the other question is, the, the discussion request regarding the request from Christ Community Church Development, is that coming from the board? Did the board ask for that, the Planning Commission rather? Was that their request?
No, Christ Community Church had sent an email to all of the town council.
Right, no, I saw that, but the, sort of the straw poll request, was that from the Planning Commission? Or is that just in relationship to the, the email request?
Well, at the Planning Commission, we talked about the request that came into the Board of Commissioners. And through a discussion with Najila, our town planner, she had suggested that we submit the request to our town attorney and request, you know, further guidance on what our options may be.
Okay, thank you.
So we know how to move forward with the request.
Okay, any additional questions, comments on the Planning Commission Report? Nope, hearing none, we are moving on. Yes, we get to agenda items. Number one, approval of the 2024 election judges for consideration. You can see commissioners in your packets, we have four applicants. We have Lynn Orndorf, Melissa McKenney, Charlotte Mezaleski, and Mark Long. Our mayor's recommendations for chief judge would be, he recommends Lynn Orndorf, Judge Melissa McKenney, Judge Mark Long, and the greeter slash alternate judge would go to Charlotte Mezaleski. I hope I'm saying that last name correctly. Thank you. Is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation for election judges presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries 5 to 0. Agenda item number two, approval of ordinance 24-07, amending town code 16.20.020 minimum requirements for fire hydrants for consideration. Commissioners, you'll see in your packet on page 30, what has been changed here is in bold. So instead of all fire hydrants shall be the M&amp;H model 929, it has been changed to American Darling B-84-B. I believe from what we heard from the staff that had to do, we're changing the model out to prevent, it's less likely to leak. Ms. Willis, did you have any additional comments on that?
Um, just this was a request from your Water and Sewer Superintendent and your Director of Public Works. This is a newer style hydrant that is much easier to work on. And the way that they operate internally makes them more efficient and less prone to leaks. This will then apply to any future developments. It'll be a requirement for developers to install this type of fire hydrant. And then when we, as the town, replace our fire hydrants, this is the model that we will go with as well.
Okay, understood, thank you. Is there, I'm going to ask for a motion and then take it to discuss. Is there a motion to approve or, ordinance, shoot, I lost it. 24-07, amending the town code 16.20.020 to the American Darling B-84B model for fire hydrants.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
If only we had a representative of the Vigilant Hose Company here to get the input from the firehouse. Mr. Mayor, with your professional experience and expertise, is this a proper step in your mind?
Yeah, it's, it's a much better product and it's, like you say, it's going to be easier to work on in the. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
I've also worked with them, they're, they're a good fog.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries 5 to 0. Moving on, as you can see, agenda item number three is removed because the, the agreement is approved through the upcoming resolution. So since they're kind of packaged together, number three will be taken care of in agenda item number four, which is approval of Resolution 24-05R, approval of cooperation agreement with the Frederick County Development Block Grant, CBGB for consideration.
And just to follow up, you also have to, if you choose to approve the resolution, you'll need to approve the following MOU.
Yes, okay, understood.
Good, good evening, Mayor Davis, Commissioners. My name is Devin Peart and I am Frederick County's Government Relations Associate. And with me tonight, I have Susan Brown, Director of Operations for the Division of Housing. We are here today to discuss Emmitsburg joining Frederick County's urban county designation in HUD's Community Development Block Grant Program. The CBGB entitlement program provides annual grants on a formula basis to entitled cities and urban counties to develop viable urban communities. By joining our urban county, your municipality would receive an annual allocation directly from the county's entitlement without going through the competitive process at the state level. Before we get into the specifics of the program, I want to make sure that everybody understands that we have been doing our calculations for this based on the best information that we have been able to get from HUD as well as census data. And for this program, HUD will use their formulas to provide an allocation to Frederick County. And then we will disperse those funds using the same type of formula that they use. What I would like to discuss is how the county will distribute the CBGB grant money once it is awarded. For everyone's awareness, this is the second year that Frederick County has been eligible to have an urban, urban county entitlement from HUD. You may also hear that the city of Frederick has their own entitlement district, but the county is separate from that and has to go through the state program, just like your municipality would, to receive any CBGB funding. The program commitment would be for three years, FY '25, '26, and '27. And at the end of that cycle, your municipality would have the option to say, you know what, we really like this program. We like how it's working and we're going to continue this partnership. Or your jurisdiction can drop out and go back to the competitive state process if you so choose. HUD uses three factors in their formula to allocate funding. One is population, the second is persons in poverty, and the third is occupied units that are overcrowded and that includes rentals and homeownership. Based on these factors, we have estimated that Frederick County would receive a base allocation of approximately $700,000 annually guaranteed. Dividing that up across the participating municipalities in the county, it did not make sense to us to keep the funding. Dividing that up across the participating municipalities in the county, it did not make sense to us to keep the funding. Uh, that the unincorporated areas of the county, areas of the county. Um, received, uh, given our goals with infrastructure and housing opportunities. Instead, we've decided to redistribute uh the funding from the unincorporated allocation amongst our participating municipalities. The only portion of funding that the county would hold on to. Uh, would be an administrative fee uh for a consolidated plan, which is required by HUD in this program. And for the only property that the county particularly, typically pursues C D B G funding for anyways, which is Bell Court, a county-owned property in Woodsboro. Uh, it's a uh fifty-five and over community. We're hoping that through this process, we're able to bring together our municipalities and continuing to strengthen our infrastructure and housing across the county. Uh, the big advantage that we see in this process is that your municipality will not have the administrative burden of applying. With the state program needing to only submit project summaries to the county. Uh, for compliance purposes and being responsive to the county for the county's reporting needs to HUD. Additionally, this funding stream is guaranteed annually, and it would make planning and budgeting easier for your municipality. Um, when that season rolls around, uh, instead of going through the state program, which is. Uh, it can be a gamble, um, whether you receive funds or not. So, uh, Susan, unless you have anything to add to that, I think we can open it up for questions from the Commissioners.
I really don't have anything to add to that. I am here to help assist with the questions. Um, the Housing Division currently is who handles the county's C D B applications. So the county applies for the C D B G needs, just like you would as a town municipality. So I'm used to the process, I'm used to the reporting, I'm used to the monitoring. Uh, just two weeks ago, I went through monitoring for our COVID grants from, you know, four or five years ago. So it is cumbersome, I know that end of it. Um, so I can answer questions as far as what that goes. I know that you've applied in the past and that you've been granted and not been granted. Um, so we're happy to answer any questions, um, and help you consider what we're asking.
Thank you very much. Um, Commissioner Hoover.
So I guess these, these grants now, so each municipality is entitled to a certain portion. I guess based on or dependent upon a particular project, should they have, should they have a project? And if they don't have a project, then those monies will be dispersed to other jurisdictions, I guess. Cause we have to have a project in the, in the pipeline somewhere. So.
Yes, so. You're, you're correct. The um, the idea is that. Um, you know, year to year, some municipalities may not have the, have a project uh in the pipeline. Um, and with that. Comes the ability to maneuver around funding.
And projects, I guess, would then be what, um, sure, water line replacement type projects or?
Um, yeah, there, it can vary, um. Infrastructure sidewalks, water and sewer like you're talking about, um. Infrastructure improvements, um, yeah.
Purchase of property, like if you had a blighted property that you wanted to purchase and repurpose, you could use the funds for that.
I like that audio.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner. Um, additional questions? Yep, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Um, so in the grant cycle, is it a competitive grant cycle? Meaning that we would be in competition with another municipality? Is that accurate?
No, so in, in this program through HUD. Uh, the county would receive an annual allocation and based on the three factors, um, that I mentioned per uh. Persons in poverty.
Population.
Population, and yeah, based on those three factors, um. Your municipality would receive a annual allocation. That is for your municipality.
Okay, so clarify then, I, I'm confused because it sounds like you're saying that there's a set amount that we're guaranteed to be receiving regardless. But also it sounds like there has to be a project that is aligned with the spending of that money. So that's why I'm asking, do we need a project and are we competitive with that piece?
It would be, um. It would be a process where. You would. Voluntarily relinquish those funds if you didn't have a project. You would have the right to those.
But to qualify for them, that's what I'm asking, like, no, so.
No, not to qualify them.
This pre qualifies is correct.
Correct, this is gonna, yes, yes, we're gonna apply the same formula that the county receives through HUD to the municipalities that way.
Okay, so. Coming around on the other side, um, an eligible project, you're very clear about your description, but one for clarification sake. And this is something in the research that I, I didn't find. Can this be used to subsidize housing, like the, the manufacturing of new housing, so as to? Reduce cost to the consumer at the end of the line? I'm not talking about public housing, I'm just talking about just subsidizing, like we're trying to encourage, for example. Workforce housing, that's the bee in my bonnet right now, and I'm trying to make sure that we have the ability to address the needs of. Our young people who have a steady job and there's a creation of housing that is within their means of purchasing.
So not necessarily something that the town isn't going to be involved in the ownership of, it's going to be encouraging a developer to, to build the workforce housing.
Correct.
So along with the, from what I understand, of, along with the C D B G funds will come and a possibility of receiving something called home funds.
Yes.
Home funds are different from C D B G. We can't get anything from HUD that gives us an idea of how much our home funds would be. Um, I think the city of Frederick gets a good bit more in home funds than they actually do in, um, in their C D B G funding, but the home funds. Um, I actually was looking that up because that is more towards the housing and that can be, um, home buyer assistance, housing rehab, uh, rental housing production. And tennis tenant-based rental assistance. So I think that could be, that could end up, I don't know, but it could trickle down in the same manner. I believe your agreement does address the home funds in that as well, in the, the proposed agreement. Um, so that's something, once we could get a, a grip of, on it, what the allocation could be. That would be allotted to the municipalities as well, could be.
So the hard question, the empirical hypothetical.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if there's seven hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars available today, what would Emmitsburg be?
Mm-hmm, we have the answer to that.
Capable of uh receiving.
So like I said, uh, based on our calculations with census data, um. We estimate that Emmitsburg would be eligible to receive an annual allocation of seventy seven thousand dollars from this program. That's, that's fluid, um, based on those numbers and.
Hypothetical, understood, understood.
But that's, that's not also not including the home, the home.
No, that's not the home, that's simply the, the C D B G funds. We can, we can get fairly close to what we anticipate receiving as a county with the C D B G, but not the home.
Right.
Um, I think the way I understand it, HUD negotiates the C D B G and then the home figures are introduced into the, the equation.
So the, the last question, I promise.
That's okay.
So are we looking at this as an allocation where it's delivered, no strings attached, as long as we're within bounds as to? The parameters of the, the grant, or is there a match requirement of any sort?
There is no, there is no match requirement, um, to my knowledge. Um, the only thing that would come along with the receiving of the funds would be. Submitted project summaries, um. Just for our staff to be able to report to HUD. Um, and our staff was, was ready to work, um, with your municipality to, to get those necessary. Summarizing. Ensure that compliances, that those, that projects are compliant, um, with HUD's program.
Great, thank you for your answers. Uh, it sounds very promising. Maybe too good to be true, I don't know.
I do believe this C B D G allows us, if it's a business bringing jobs to the, to the community. We can probably utilize some of those grants to, for infrastructure for that. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, yes.
Yeah, cause, cause you're bringing jobs and sort of for, for a little.
There is an economic development piece to it, yes.
Yeah, I thought that was. That'd be good.
Can I ask a question?
Commissioner, yes, go ahead.
Um, I had read through all this, um, the administrative fee is what HUD sets? Is that what the county's gonna use?
Is that, there's a max that HUD.
Would you know what the max percentage is? Is it twenty?
Max percentage is twenty percent.
Okay, and then my one other question is, so by joining this, then the town cannot apply for any other C D B G. Grant funding, is that correct?
For the time period.
For, for those three years.
For those, for those three years, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is that gonna, is that gonna create a problem for other possibilities for us?
Well, seeing that the last C, C D B G grant we applied for, we didn't get. Cause it is highly competitive, um. No, I think we'll be alright.
Okay, I just didn't know how many we got in the past or how many we really supplied for. Cause it'd be, we won't be applying anymore.
Correct, the last one we got did, did help with one of the water line projects. It was. I don't know the amount off the top of my head, but this last grant that we just did, we did not receive.
Alright.
Okay. Um, any other questions or comments, Commissioners?
I, I was gonna ask the same thing that Mrs. Willis did about, does it preclude us from applying for other grants and I was. Hoping that wasn't the answer because it does seem to tie our hands with applying for other grants, like the one we had applied for. Which you just said was not awarded, was for eight hundred thousand dollars. So to limit us to seventy seven thousand per year and unable to apply for other grants for other purposes seems pretty restrictive.
That's for the annual funding round through the state, the C D B, it doesn't disallow you from applying for all other grants, it's just those through the, you know, the communities who, through the C D B G program. The, the state's competitive C D B G program, yes.
And is there a period of time in which we have to use those funds? Like by the end of the fiscal year, or can we roll them forward?
As I understand it, you can roll them forward. So that, that's where that list of, of your, your scope of what the projects that you want to do will come in handy because maybe. Um, Thurmont doesn't have a project. They're ready for, for a few years and they're willing to pass their funds over to Emmitsburg. And Emmitsburg can make their project happen faster and then maybe the next year it works the other way.
Yeah, I don't think it would be difficult to spend seventy seven thousand dollars.
No, it certainly wouldn't. If your last, I think your, last year's uh grant was five hundred and some thousand, but um, this year you haven't, you have nothing. Um, and next year you may have nothing. I don't know if you, is it, was last year the first year you had applied for a C D B G?
No, we've gotten some in the past. Um, we had some for a sidewalk project and, and another water line project. Um, this was gonna be for a Green Street and Waterline project that we did not receive any funding for.
By doing this, though, it's more or less like the P O S grant money, really. Where the municipalities get their portion and they work it between themselves, like, who's got a project and who doesn't?
Mm-hmm.
So, things will be more. Easier to deal with. I like it.
And, and what we've noticed at, um, with other municipalities is, um. Most are, are not even trying due to the competitive nature, um, that you've experienced. So we feel that this, this. Way of doing this program. Gives our municipalities a better chance of receiving some funding rather than none at all.
Thank you.
And Mister Mayor, the town, it's the town's position that they would like to move forward with the agreement and the M O U?
Yes, I've been in contact with some of the other mayors. And uh, that are much more familiar with this than I am. This is my first year with this particular uh grant. And uh, and we talked about it a lot and it's, it's our recommendation to, to go through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Any additional questions or comments? Alright, well, thank you for being here to answer our questions. You provided a lot of detail and clarification. I appreciate that.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
You're welcome. Now that we've heard all the details and asked questions, we're looking at. A motion to approve the resolution. Twenty four dash oh five R.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty five dash oh, twenty four dash oh five R. Ask, ask him about it.
It does say up at the top. It does say up at the top, it's resolution number two four zero dash oh five, is that it?
So what is it, what is it?
It should be twenty four dash oh five R.
Okay.
There just isn't added zero.
I know, I was looking, yeah, that was on page forty, I'm sorry, I was looking here.
Twenty four dash oh five R.
Alright, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? Here, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Um, now that we've. Approved the resolution, we're going right into the memorandum of understanding. Uh, that ties in with this resolution. So it's a memorandum of understanding with the Community Block or Development Block Grant Program. And it just outlines how long that we, we commit for three years and. Um, basically everything that you, you just heard tonight is just a memorandum of understanding. Uh. Is there a motion to approve? What is, what is it? The memorandum of understanding for the Community Block or Development Block Grant Program.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any further uh discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Alright, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, which is approval of ordinance twenty four dash oh six, amend Emmitsburg Town Code two point two eight. Point oh three oh, which is the vote count for consideration. If you refer to page forty five of your packet, we're basically looking at putting something into our ordinance. To address some unique situations that may occur with future elections. So the part is that's been added is in bold and I'll just read that sec, wow, that's kind of long. I'll read the section, which is the following shall apply in the event that multiple commission seats are to be filled in the same election. So first, all candidates for commission, commissioners shall appear together on the ballot and voters shall be entitled, titled to vote. As, for as many candidates for commissioner as there are open commissioner seats. For example, if there are two open commission seats, voters may cast a vote for up to two candidates. Um, they do not have to vote for two, but up to two. Number two, the commission seats shall be filled based on the number of votes each candidate receives, starting with the highest number of votes. And decreasing thereafter until all open seats are filled. For example, if there are two open commission seats, the judges shall declare the candidates receiving the first and the second most votes to be elected a commissioner. And number three, in the event a commission seat is to be filled for a partial term. All for full-term commissioned seats shall be filled first as described in section. D two above. The election judges shall then declare the candidate that has received the next most votes to be elected to fill the partial term seat. For example, if there are three commission seats to be filled in, in an election, two of which are for full terms and one of which is for a partial term. The candidates receiving the first and the second most votes will be awarded the two full-term seats. And the candidate receiving the third most votes shall be awarded the partial term seat, which I believe. We are looking at that exact situation at our upcoming election. So that is at the guidance of, of the lawyer of how we can move forward so that we don't have any. Question as to how the, who will receive that partial term. Okay, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty four dash oh six as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Moving on, does anybody have comments or questions regarding the changes to this ordinance? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Alright, and moving on. To number six, approval of requests from Cattockton Mountain Club for a ten by twelve shed on town-owned property for consideration. So this is where I will, um, invite Mister Ventura back up to describe the need for the ten by twelve. And I'll turn that over to you, thank you.
Hello. Okay, um, yeah, so the shed that we're looking to place. Um, well, first of all, where can we place it? I think that, was that answered at the last meeting or?
I actually sent, um, the map and location to Mister Crone, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I caught you off guard. Um, and I sent the location to him and he said that was acceptable.
Okay.
Uh, it was late on. I think it was, right, um, yes, so I sent that location to him, which is, you have on page forty eight.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in your agenda packet, um, that location was also acceptable to our public works, um, as we are very limited on.
as we are very limited on town space. And have you seen it?
Okay, no, I have not.
Can I give this to him?
You may, yes.
Do you want to look at it real quick?
Yeah, I mean, any space we can get. We're very thankful for you guys allowing us to start the club. Yes.
We do have two sheds that are on the other side. I know one shed is being used with the, for lawnmower and stuff kept in it. I don't know what the other shed has.
The other one belongs to Disc Golf. There's your Lions Club shed and then Disc Golf.
Everyone, I'm talking about over here, if they needed another.
Oh, okay.
Over here on Memorial Park Field, there was two sheds already there. One has got a lawnmower in it or a tractor. I don't know what the other ones.
We'll take it.
I mean, it belonged to the Little League at one time. I don't know what's in the other shed at all.
Let's go.
I don't, I don't think nobody, I don't know if there's anything in it. There might not be anything in it. Like, you know, it could be stored. It was the Lulix. But only had both of them. Right, I don't think they store anything else in the shed except for the one. They used the one shed for lawn and stuff.
Yeah.
But the other shed, I don't think anybody's been in it. I've never seen it open.
Okay. My understanding was it's an Airbnb, but I mean. A quick question about this locate, I'm sorry, Mr. Winter, you still going? I'm sorry.
No, I just, if they need extra space, there, there might be some there too, if they need extra space also.
Does this site take up any parking spaces, or is it in that sort of wedge there?
It's in the grassy area. It will not take up any parking spaces.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
The ideal spot would be back here on the, the Blacktop or just off the Blacktop, and unfortunately, the Board of Education won't let us put a building there. We were gonna try and see what happened, but I thought maybe better not.
So it sounds like we have an option. So how do we move forward from here? Do we want to pursue looking at the existing shed over in Memorial first?
If that's up in the air, I'd say let's just go with the plan we have in hand. If there's a need for more storage, which there could be.
Okay.
It might, if they need any more storage, which they don't, they don't need.
Alright, so go with the existing. I mean, how do you feel about that? Do you want to go ahead and do the ten by twelve, and then if you need more, look over, pursue Memorial or vice versa?
Perfect. We'll do, we'll go ahead and pursue this.
Okay.
What we already have planned. And then if we need more space, then yeah, we'll welcome anything that the town can provide.
I do have a couple of questions, and I, I think we approved a shed before, and we didn't for Disc Golf.
For Lions Club. Lions Club sheds over there.
And Disc Golf.
And both.
And Disc Golf, yes. So in the event, I, I mean, I don't know. So in the event commissioners and Mr. Mayor, that something happens, like if the shed is abandoned, for example, by the Little League, and they don't need it anymore, or, and we have, or if for some reason the Cattacton Mountain Club doesn't need the shed anymore, how do we move forward with that? Is there some kind of written agreement that it will pass back over to town ownership? You see what I'm saying?
Normally in a nonprofit, from what I understand, like, we're learning all this stuff as we go. The shed either will be donated to another nonprofit or turned over to the state or to the municipality where it is. So. We can't sell, yeah, it'll belong to.
Okay.
Yeah. 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 So we can put on the, on, on the, however, motion or whatever happens, that the shed will go to.
Yeah.
Or stay in the place where it is and be used according to whatever you guys want it to be used.
Now hopefully that will never happen, because this is gonna take off, right?
We're gonna need more space.
That's right.
Stadium, you know, we're gonna.
Yeah, so hopefully, you know, we won't have to worry about that, but that might just be a little something we could add in for clarification.
And if you need a project for the seventy seven thousand dollars for that grant, then it can be part of that project for growth and development.
It was ten by twelve.
I, I, I do believe that whether it's a prefabricated shed or not, either way, I believe it needs a, a permit, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
And we'll handle all the permits through the county.
Okay.
It's actually gonna be donated by Barron's Lumber. And my company, Ventura's Carpentry, is gonna donate the labor to build it onsite.
Oh, nice.
So it's all, everything that we're doing is donations, so.
Okay.
The only, if I can't recall correctly, but I think the only town perm, you're only gonna need a town permit because of the size. But if you reach out to our town planner, she'll walk you through everything.
Okay.
Now, the design, I assume, is aesthetically pleasing, and it's not gonna be painted like black and white cow spots or something like that.
No, it's just gonna be, we'll try to probably do something that, the same as the shed that's on the parking lot, the Lions Club shed.
Oh, perfect.
We'll try to make it blend in as.
Very good.
Or whatever you guys want us to do.
As long, you know, if it matches what's currently there, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you. Additional questions?
When do we start the dome?
The dome, we'll start, well, we need some grants for that, but yeah.
There was a discussion.
Hopefully, yes, we're looking to build, to grow this club and, and, yeah, that'd be great.
I know registration has been open. When do you anticipate opening day?
Opening day, it's gonna be September seventh for the first game of the season. We are hoping, we're actually gonna meet this Friday, but we are hoping to start practices August twenty sixth or the last week of August. And go from there. But the season normally lasts about two months. It'll go into like late October. If we win tournaments and we win tournaments around the area, then it'll be probably like the first week of November, the latest. And then we're looking to, which we're meeting about this Friday also, to start a winter program also, which will be looking maybe at the gym to, you know, reserve some space for indoor soccer for the winter to keep the kids going all year round. But, yeah.
What age group are you doing?
We are doing three years old to fourteen years old. So, so far, we have about fifty to sixty players already signed up from speaking to other clubs around the area. Forty to sixty percent of the registrations happened the last week
Yeah.
of registration. So, you know, if we can, if we can break seventy five to eighty, it's gonna be massive success. You know, if, if you, if you think about it, you, you have eighty kids on any given weekend, weekend, you know, and most of them have, you know, both parents come, grandparents, uncles, aunts. So the traffic that that'll bring into the town is gonna be, you know, three hundred to four hundred people weekends, and then they're in practices, two, two practices a week, and they're divvied up depending on age groups. So you're gonna have, I would say maybe thirty kids practicing any given day, Monday through Friday, because it, the practices depend on the coaches. So, you know, Coach Jesse might wanna practice Tuesdays and, Tuesdays and Fridays. I'll practice Mondays and Wednesdays. So every day, there's gonna be kids out on the field. Plus whoever, you know, we saw some kids and some parents playing out in the fields already.
Are all weekends only?
The games are on Saturdays.
Just Saturday, is it all day Saturday?
From nine to three o'clock, I believe. Yeah.
You guys have anything? Are you selling refreshments and stuff there too?
I actually wrote a note about the concession stand that's gonna be built. It's gonna be built, and can the club use the concession stand?
Uh, yeah, I was so.
Sorry.
This, this concession stand project has been like forever. So our goal is to have it completed, what did I say, November? November of this year, and then the mayor and I have discussed having agreements with different groups to use the concession stand. So that's in the works.
Okay, perfect, yeah. But, yeah, so, so we're thinking that maybe for opening, for opening day in inviting food trucks to come out, depending on what happens on the weekends. You know, we're always thinking really big, but you know, we, we never know. You know, keep inviting them to come, come into town and, you know, but we'll, you know, we'll see. It's our first season. We just put it together. We're like a, like Jesse calls us a sixty day club. You know, but we're the, the community. I guess involvement already has been like just super impressive. So we're, we're very thankful and we're very like excited.
Where are you pulling kids from? What areas?
Emmitsburg, Sebellesville, Fairfield, Thurmont is mo- like, probably like half of the kids are coming from Thurmont. And Rocky Ridge, couple from Frederick. So it's just, you know, once we build the program, then, you know, if our program is better than other programs, and that's when we're gonna start seeing a better, you know, showing of, you know, teams.
Well, it sounds promising right from the beginning, so.
Yes, it is. Very, we're very excited.
Alright, well, thank you very much for the information.
Yep.
We need to vote.
Yes, we do. Is there a motion to approve the request of the Cattacton Mountain Club for a ten by twelve shed on the town-owned property, which is located adjacent or in front of the parking lot of the Eugene Myers Park. Is that what?
So moved.
Alright, is there a second? Any further discussion?
Yes, I want to throw a couple things. And number one, this is great, thank you. More than a few years ago, I spoke to the head greenskeeper at the University of Maryland and brought him to Emmitsburg to look at the community park field. It was not draining well, and his suggestions, I talked to him recently. Again, and hi- his suggestions were core aeration and overseeding. In talking to town staff, I was advised that there are some approved fertilizers that could be used, but they have to be approved by F C P S on their approved list. So regarding maintenance forthcoming, I know those will be discussions and it will be held, but for the sake of institutional knowledge, these are things that will be necessary to make sure that we have an excellent playing surface for anybody who chooses to use those fields. But at this time especially, soccer, I'll say football, but you know, it's, it's a bad accent, so I can't do it. Alright, so. We'll see. Alright, with that, I end my discussion.
Alright, thank you.
Just to be clear, the motion, it is to be purchased, maintained, and installed by the, by the club, is the motion?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Congratulations on your shift. With that, we are going to be setting the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, thank you. So the next town meeting is September ninth. So I have a couple of items. For administrative business, there will be a presentation and discussion regarding the twenty twenty five farmers market. Consent agenda proclamation declaring September twenty twenty four National Recovery Month for consideration. And I have five agenda items. Number one, approval of bid for the fabrication and installation of new welcome sign, of new welcome to Emmitsburg signs for consideration. Number two, approval of ordinance twenty four dash oh eight, amending town code ten point twelve point one oh one, reserved parking for recharging plug-in electric drive vehicles for consideration. Number three, for consideration, reject the proposed dedication of open space in the Brookfield subdivision as stated on the final, final plats recorded in book seventy one, pages one thirty four, one thirty six, one thirty nine, and one forty two, and book fifty eight, page forty one. Number four, for consideration, approval of a twenty five year, twenty five year revertible forest conservation deed of easement with the daughters of charity and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town. And number five, discussion related to tap fees for Christ Community Church.
Yes. Um, commissioners, do you have any other items that we need to consider for August or September? I'm sorry.
I might bring up a business item related to trails, just to give an update, is the status of rebuild of the Red Trail, if that's permissible.
So I would add that under administrative business, just an update on the Red Trail Improvement Project.
Sure.
That works.
Great. The second item question, not adding anything. The rejection of the Brookfield Conservation Eas- I'm sorry, what was the?
Open space.
Open space. I'm, I'm assuming we're in touch with the H O A, and they've been aligned in the break. Thank you, thank you. That's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Willetts. Okay, is there a motion to accept the agenda with the additions from Commissioner O'Donnell and the addition of the Christ Community Church tap fees?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Agenda has been accepted. Before we make a motion to adjourn, we need to read the closing statement because we will be moving into closed session. You forgot about that, didn't you, Ms.? Yes.
Oh, we had talked about a workshop to
Yes.
talk about water funds.
Yes, yes, we have. September, September, I thought we had for the water rates. Do we wanna, I, we mentioned looking at tap fees. Did we want to try to do that in August? Which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Can we do them both in September, at the same session? Or you think that'd be too much?
Kind of where, that was kind of what I was thinking. Think the tap fee's gonna be easier than two.
It's not the third Monday. I mean, I, I, why don't we try, and then if we need to extend with another workshop, we will. Yeah, if that works. I know Commissioner Sweeney said not the third Monday.
Yes, please do not do the third Monday. I've already got two meetings on that night.
Do we choose that date now?
So if Sweeney is one of them involved in the NFL, that's a nonprofit, you know.
On the fourteenth, the town office is closed. That's your second Monday.
This is, we're looking in September.
Oh, September.
September, yeah. We're only in August.
She's trying to get to Christmas.
Are you getting ready to retire in December?
No.
Yes.
Oh, guys want to get rid of me?
No, he's retired.
Not soon enough.
So it looks like either the, the twenty third or the thirtieth.
The third doesn't work.
It's the sixteenth for you.
When's the town meet in September?
The ninth.
The ninth.
September ninth.
So we have nine, sixteen, twenty three, or thirty?
I'm during the week, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, let's start with the twenty third. I'm free that day. That's a Monday.
Twenty third's fine for me too.
Or the thirtieth works for me.
Yeah, I think the twenty third, because I think we reserve the thirtieth for a planning commission meeting. It's typically their last Monday, and then that's the day before the election as well.
Okay.
So staff's a little busy that, getting prepared for that.
Yes, you're right. It may, it may be a planning commission meeting.
So September twenty third is what we're proposing.
I'll, I'll try to call in. I'll be on my way back from Dallas. Going to visit Jerry's World.
Should we, maybe we should have it a different day, so you're here for the discussion.
That's okay, I can call in. I'll try to call in. I'll probably be on the way back from the airport. So I'll call in.
Okay.
Stick my tongue out and stuff in the bouncing.
You don't, we could. If that works, we can do the twenty third at seven, I guess. Yep, or the twenty fourth, or the twenty fourth.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Do I hear a Tuesday? Do I hear a Wednesday?
Tuesday's fine.
Tuesday's fine.
Tuesday's fine.
I think my flight was delayed. No, that's great. I just didn't want to put you all out, but yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Tuesday works. Tuesday, the twenty fourth at seven P M. That's what we're gonna do? Yeah, twenty fourth. Yes. Alright. Now we can, oh, yes, we have to do a close, okay. Now we turn to our final agenda item. The mayor and the board of commissioners intend to meet in a closed session to discuss applications for personnel ma- matter. This is the final agenda item, and the board of commissioners will not be me- This is the final agenda item and the board of commissioners will not be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended. There's so much to read. Do I have to read the whole thing again? I mean, I read most of it at the beginning, correct?
You read the first part.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can just, you can announce the section of the code. You don't have to read the entire part and then the purpose of the meeting.
Okay.
Will suffice.
We we just, yeah, we just did that. Yeah.
Do we need to vote to accept the agenda for the next meeting?
Did we just do that?
We already did not.
Are we set on that or we?
Yeah, five to zero.
Okay.
Yeah, we we accepted and then we went on to workshop dates. Yeah, it was the twenty fourth at seven. All right. So the topic to be discussed during the closed meeting is applications for the position of water and sewer operator. So the authority for the meeting in closed session, um, in closed session for this purpose is the Maryland Code Annotated General Provisions Article three dash three oh five B one, which authorizes us to meet in closed session to discuss employment. The reason for closing this session is that public discussion of applicants' names and job information could discourage people from applying for town jobs. Do I hear a motion to adopt the closing statement as read and to enter into? Wait, I have to officially close. To enter into closed meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Officially close.
I have to close the meeting.
All right. Now I'm closing the open meeting.
I'm ready to close the meeting.
At. Perfect, all in favor. Aye, meeting is adjourned at eight thirty three P M.